Good evening. I'm going to call this meeting to order. The time is 7:30. This is a regular council meeting for July 28th. Clerk, can you please do a roll call?
Mayor Pro Temblis.
I'm here.
Councilman Fleming.
Here.
Councilman Muir.
Here.
Counselor Borbok.
Here.
Councilman Soltis.
Counselor Wright.
Here.
And Mayor Graffsten.
I am here, thank you. The invocation of the pledge this evening will be led by Mayor Pro Temblis. I invite you to stand if you would like.
Let us gather tonight with grateful hearts for the seven decades of hard work that has gone into building the community here in Madison Heights. We give thanks for the spirits of creativity and unity that have always carried us through, and may that spirit continue to bind us, reminding us that new ideas are the most valuable currency for city leaders, and that our shared commitment to this community always outweighs our differences. We pray for a flourishing spirit of volunteerism, recognizing that our strength as a community has always lied in each person's willingness to contribute their time and talent. May we find joy in serving our neighbors and enriching Madison Heights through our collective efforts. Also, grant all of us the wisdom and grace that we need in our interactions. When differences arise, help us to remember to seek to understand before we speak out. May empathy guide our conversations, and may our shared humanity always be our common ground. We look to the future with optimism, trusting in Madison Heights' resilience and incredible potential. May new voices rise, bringing fresh ideas with them, and may we always be blessed with leaders who embody dedication and integrity, and may each of us be inspired to contribute to the vibrant and connected community that we are so fortunate to call home. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. First up, can I please have a motion to appoint Annette Boucher as our acting city clerk, please?
Your Honor?
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor, support.
A few motions been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those can't say no, motion carries. First up then, after that, we have approval of the agenda. Are there any additions or deletions this evening?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I'd like to add the policy for special event tables for council. I guess that's what I'll call it.
Okay. Where would you like to put that?
Hold on a minute. We just put it on number seven under reports. No, 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 I'm sorry. Right before the ordinances after bid purchases.
Okay, so?
Number nine, or number?
It actually would be like 6.5 under reports. Okay, all right, 6.5, is that good?
Yep.
All right, is there support? Can I get a motion to support this?
Support.
All right, thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Your Honor?
Yes.
Do we have, do we have copies that we'd be able to review during the discussion?
I can print the two of them that went out to council a couple of weeks ago.
We received this a couple of weeks ago. I don't know, can't find it here, but yeah, we received it a couple of weeks ago, so yes, we do have copies. Is there any other discussion?
Your Honor?
Yes.
Since it wasn't on the agenda, we haven't, we don't have the things in front of us. I, I'm not going to support putting it on the agenda because I think we should maybe plan ahead and perhaps bring it at a time where it's going to be more appropriate for our conversation, and so we're prepared for that conversation. But that's just my comment. We can, we're still going to vote.
Sure, sure, that's fine. Any other comments about adding it to the agenda? This is not a vote on, this is a vote to see if we're going to add it on to the agenda. Yes?
I thought, Your Honor, forgive me if I'm wrong, but wasn't it already planned to be discussed further down the line? Is there a reason why we're bumping it up?
Yes, go ahead.
Well, originally, following the festival, I drafted two different versions and sent it to council on the, let me find the exact day, on the 17th of July, with the intentions of putting it on the agenda tonight, but I got, in talking to different council people, different feedback about it. And then, why are we doing it now? Because we are going to have new members of council, that's a given, in November, and they can change the policy again, and this isn't even going to happen until next June, so I thought the more appropriate time would be to let the new council actually review it, maybe around March or April, when we're actually planning for the festival next year. So that's what I said to council on Thursday, that I was not going to put it on the agenda tonight, and that was the reason why. But I can print it for everybody, it's just going to take me a minute.
Okay, and I can deal with a two-minute recess to do that, that's fine. Any other discussion about adding this to the agenda to have a vote? Okay, so I will be voting in favor of this. I think there were a number of things that happened prior to the festival, and this should have been discussed before, and it wasn't, so I don't see the need to wait. So if there's no further discussion, all in favor of, and this is just adding it to the agenda, not the discussion about it, but all in favor of adding it to the agenda to discuss and vote on, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against, say no.
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 Okay.
Your Honor, perhaps we could go through a roll call. It's hard to tell.
I believe it was Councilman Muir, Counselor Wright, and Counselor Borbok who were no's. And am I correct that Councilman Soltis, Councilman Fleming, myself, and Mayor Pro Tem were yessos? Okay. All right, so that has been added to 6.5. Is there anyone else who has anything to add or delete from the agenda? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to the next item, which is public hearings. This is from the CED director. This is the CDBG reprogramming public facilities and improvements for fiscal year 2024 funds. I'm going to have the report from our city manager, and then I will open, open for public comment.
The city's 2024 Community Development Block Grant Program Year application was $64,817 was approved for public facility improvements for pedestrian amenities along 11 Mile Road. These amenities were purchased for a total of $13,919.92, leaving a remaining balance of $50,897.8. Staff is proposing that unspent funds from public facilities and improvements for the program year 2024 be reprogrammed to be used for improvements at Rosie's Park, including the installation of a drinking fountain and benches, and the minor home repair program for qualifying projects. Staff therefore recommends that City Council approve the Community Development Block Grant Reprogramming Resolution, authorizing funds to be reallocated as follows: $17,000 from Public Facilities and Improvement Program Year 2024 to Public Facilities and Improvements for Program Year 2024, and $33,897.8 from Public Facilities and Improvements to Minor Home Repair for that account, and to further authorize the filing of the reprogramming with Oakland County.
All right, thank you. So before I get a motion from council to approve this, I'm going to open the public hearing specifically about this reprogramming. So if you want to speak about something else, this is not the time, but if you want to speak specifically about this reprogramming, I'm going to open the floor if anyone's interested. Okay, seeing no one wishing to speak about that, I'm going to close the floor, and I'm going to ask for a motion from council to approve, please.
Your Honor? I'd like to make, to make a motion to approve the resolution which authorizes the Community Economic Development Department to prepare and submit a request to Oakland County to reprogram $17,000 from Public Facilities and Improvements Program Year 2024-03L to Public Facilities and Improvement Program Year 2024-03F, and $33,897.8 to be reprogrammed from Public Facilities and Improvement Program Year 2024-03L to Minor Home Repair Account further to the city council, excuse me, further the city of Madison Heights, as the applicant authorized the filing, and said reprogramming of funds with Oakland County. Got tongue tied, sorry.
All right, thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor?
Yes.
Support.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion among council regarding the reprogramming?
Your Honor?
Yes.
Just because I know there's probably a lot of eyes glazing over right now, to, I think, simplify it for the public, we came in with a budgeted plan on how to use this funding, which is essentially grant funding. We got everything that we bought at a lower price than what we had assumed, and so this vote is simply to direct the additional funds to improvements within Rosie's Park, and then the Minor Home Repair Grant Program. Otherwise, we would lose it. Correct?
Yes.
Thanks.
All right, thank you. Is there any other comments, discussion?
Your Honor?
Yes.
Do we know, if staff knows, how much by adding this will the Minor Home Repair Projects Fund will have?
I'm sure Giles does.
So the addition of the $33,000 would be combined. We have, I don't know the exact number, but it's around $11,000 left over from a previous program year. So I would say roughly $45,000 if this was approved would be available for minor home repair projects.
Well, and could you speak briefly about the cap on that, why we can't put all of the money into minor home repair?
Sure. So we do a minor home repair program. We do, it's for up to $10,000. It's an income qualifying program. It's a grant program to help stabilize our neighborhoods. We're also using 17 of this, if it were approved, to make improvements in Rosie's Park. Rosie's Park's in a low to mod income census tract, so this allows us to improve public facilities there and put the remainder into that program. So kind of solves two programs, and in my, my view, it, it funds two very important programs for us.
All right, thank you. I'm for this, just to let you know.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, comments?
Your Honor?
Yes.
Just something that came to me. If we could look into getting one of the cool drinking fountains that has a little pet thing at the bottom, I'm sure our pet-loving, dog-walking residents would enjoy that.
Noted. I'll ask Sean.
All right, anything else from council? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against, say no. Motion carries. All right, next up is meeting open to the public, so this is the opportunity for the public to speak. Ask that you, that you take three minutes, give your name, address, anything that identifies you, direct your comments to me, and with that, the floor is yours. Sir, you have three minutes.
The people of Michigan conspiracy as conspirators, who's including Cheryl Dennis Winkler Burnett, who's too scared to use a lawyer for conspirators and legal cases for a legal plaintiff, who's Peter. No one's publicly disapproving of who's conspirators for legal cases for Peter. Public's legally able to speech on facts about conspirators Peter in Madison Heights businesses, starting, continuing on July 28th, after July 28th, 2025, on cameras, conspirators not independent in ALL, that's A-L-L, places as criminals. No Michigan peoples publicly disapproving of these facts on cameras writing for Peter, not T. Uncle Tom Waters.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak this evening?
Good evening. I'm Kathy Sapia, a long time since 1976, resident and homeowner on Dartmouth Street. Well, here we go again. Last September 2023, two months shy of two years, the residents of Dartmouth, Carham, and Billair Streets were here to oppose the gas station expansion, expansion project at the end of Dartmouth. We were and are concerned about our home values and traffic. At the time, we were notified by mail. Okay, got a little thing? This year, a notification was in the Madison newspaper. I needed a magnifying glass to read it. I still really am not sure of all the particulars, just it's August 19. I feel like this is a hidden sneak in the making. The past month, other communities have said no to similar proposals, such as the Sheetz gas station projects and other communities. I hope this council says no to the Dartmouth expansion proposal. We are a neighborhood of children and upkept homes and lawns. This is a traffic concern and a home value concern. Today, will the council tell us four things? One, what are the notification procedures? Two, will we be notified as in the past? Three, what are your thoughts on this gas station expansion project with the drive-through window, a restaurant, extra lanes, knock-down homes, and a parking lot? And four, will the Planning Commission at their August 19 meeting have knowledge of our concerned protests of two years ago? I'd like to ask the secretary or whatever if they could give them the meetings of those, the minutes of those two meetings where we presented that. Timing is everything, and I realize this can happen anywhere, but just this morning, we had a two-car collision that ended up with two tow trucks being called in, in about an hour of traffic commotion on Dartmouth. Please address these concerns, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I think I have a fellow neighbor that would...
If you, if you would, if you would like to, up to the podium. Yeah, just up to the podium. And actually, what? So I can, we can address some of that right now, but the notification, I can tell you, the notification that you've received, or the notification in the paper, what you were just showing, and I saw it, I know, it is to small print, it's the way they all go. August 19th is the next Planning Commission meeting. So that I'm not quite sure about, but I am going to ask our economic development coordinator, who is here, Giles, I'm going to ask him to address some of these. Right now, we're not going to discuss with you whether or not we're in favor of knocking down homes to put in a drive-through, but I will have him just sort of walk through the procedure, so that you understand how this all goes, and when you're notified, and why you're notified, and how you're notified. Okay? But I'm going to, I'm going to let, I'm guessing your neighbor, she's going to voice similar concerns, I'm guessing, and then I'm going to ask Giles to just sort of address what your concerns are. Okay? Hi, you have three minutes, please go ahead.
My name's Linda. Look, I live in the second house on the east side of that street off of Dartmouth, the second house south. We have more traffic through there. You could go there and count the house cars that come through there, and now they want to tear down that house, which will get me on my porch to watch everybody come and go into their restaurant. It'll, because it's going to be a drive-in and out, in and out. Now, the Red Lobster goes out on 12 Mile, what's wrong with them? They can't go out on 12 Mile if they put a restaurant in there? I used to live there, and there was a restaurant there, and nobody had a problem. This guy wants to tear down that house right in front of me, just like I'm looking at you, and I'll be looking at everybody coming and going. There's enough traffic there. Somebody's going to get killed there. No, they're taking away our parking spots, and there's no parking spots there. It is a travesty for everyone apart there. Now, it, it is, it is really bad to live there. Now, we don't want to leave. Our house is nice inside. We can pay for it. We cannot go out and pay twice for a house that we finally got a place to live, because that's what they're going for now. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak this evening?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Corey Haynes, 30160 Elmer's Drive. I just wanted to bring up something that was probably a sore subject at the time, but I want to bring it back up to just give more kudos to especially Mayor Graffsten with her leadership with bringing forth the issues with the Oakland County assessing. In the Sherman Brothers and Melissa Marsh obviously did a fantastic job, but it was more than that. It was more than what I spoke about the first time, because not only was it by sending a resolution to the county, it was a resolution that had impact, from what I now know, on many other cities, that also, because of the same issues that were happening, the same costs that were being passed on, other cities have now moved away from the county and went to a private firm. And also for Melissa to be able to quickly find another firm, find one that actually offers more services, better services, for less than what the county was charging us initially, is fantastic. So again, a great job by everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak this evening? Okay, I'm going to close public comment, and I just want to clarify, get some clarification about the notification procedures, and if the neighbors are going to be notified, and how, and letting Planning Commission know. Before I do that, I do want to let you know that Planning Commission, just like this and any of our boards and commissions, those are all public meetings, and all of them at the beginning start with open to the public. So absolutely, August 19th, here, you can come and you can voice your concerns. There will be, there will be the opportunity for you to do that. Okay?
Actually, while Giles is coming up, if he knows that, if the residents are going to be getting notifications. So there's actually going to be a formal public hearing at the Planning Commission on August the 19th at 5:30. So we can make a note that all the comments from this before are added to the minutes, but if you want to come that night again as well, because the Planning Commission actually makes a recommendation back to city council. So that would be where the public hearing is going to be held.
Could you have the minutes from the two meetings two years ago?
Yeah, we can include those, because we have the parcel number and everything here for the 28767 Dartmouth Street.
I remember when you came, there, there were a number of you, and I also remember telling you that at that meeting, there was nothing we were doing at that meeting. So this August 19th meeting? No, and, and that's fine, but the August 19th meeting, that is when the first, that is going to be the first step. Okay?
Thank you.
Okay. Does that answer your questions, or?
Yeah, I think, yeah, there's one more meeting before, I think it comes to you then, they'll have the recommendation.
Depends on the outcome of that meeting. Giles, can you just address the, why they received before? They received something in the mail?
That's the actual planning department. I mean, he's welcome to address it.
If you know, if you know the answer, my apologies. If you know the answer, just why this one, some are in the newspaper, and some we get them at, at our house.
I don't know why this one is in the newspaper opposed to receiving a letter in the mail. I do know that public hearing notice is required for the proposed changes that are happening, so that's why you saw that notice in the paper. I'm happy to provide, our department's happy to provide any past meeting minutes that will be included in that packet for consideration. And then I can discuss further if we can do some sort of mailer, but I don't know the answer to that question.
Okay, no, that's fine. I thought you might.
We are required to do public hearing notice, and that public hearing will be conducted at the Planning Commission. So Planning Commission will make a recommendation, and then if it succeeds, then it would go before city council.
Okay, all right. So then I'm, public meeting, or open to the public is closed, and I'm going to move to the consent agenda. Can I get a motion to approve, please?
Your Honor? Motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
All right, thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor? Support.
A few motions been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against, say no. Motion carries, and then we'll move on to reports. The first is from the Finance Director. It's the Accelerated Tax Foreclosure Resolution for '25, '26.
So annually, we are required to consider this resolution. The Certificate of Abandoned Property for Accelerated Foreclosure Act allows for property with delinquent taxes and that have been certified abandoned by the local governing body to enter the accelerated foreclosure process, in which the county treasurer's office can foreclose on a property one year earlier than the regular three-year foreclosure process. This annual election of accelerating the tax foreclosure process can be a useful tool in expediting the removal of abandoned properties and reducing blight. We did approve this last year. We did not have to use it. Hopefully, we don't have to use it this year either, but staff recommends that council approve the resolution for cer- certification of abandoned property for Accelerated Furniture Act as presented.
All right, thank you. Can I get a motion from council to approve, please?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that we approve the resolution for certification of abandoned property for Accelerated Foreclosure Act.
All right, thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor?
Yes. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against, say no. Motion carries. And then we have from the CED director, the 241 East 11 Mile Road encroachment agreement.
The encroachment agreement between the city of Madison Heights and the property owner at 241 East 11 Mile has been proposed to help mitigate the impact on private property
owners' parking lot circulation and the number of parking spaces. It allows parked vehicles to encroach on the city's right-of-way along 11 Mile by 5.5 feet. This arrangement both provides adequate drive aisle for parking circulation on a private lot, and still allows the inclusion of the 10-foot multipath and on-street parking as part of the 11 Mile Streetscape Project. Staff recommends that City Council approve the encroachment agreement for 241 East 11 Mile and authorize the City Manager and City Clerk to sign on behalf of the city pending final legal approval.
All right, thank you. Can I please get a motion from council to approve?
Your Honor.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that the agreement, the City Council approved this agreement and authorized City Manager and City Clerk to sign the proposed encroachment agreement pending final legal approval.
All right, thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor, yes.
Support. A motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
I would request Giles kind of describe what's going on here. We've got a dandy, handy-dandy Google map earlier, but I think when I was looking at the information provided, you know, there is a schematic and stuff that shows where, where that is, but I want to kind of get a little bit more information from Giles for the public about what this is and how it's going to impact, if at all, the streetscaping changes over on 11 Mile.
Yes, so for those following along, on page 30, there's Exhibit D is the best kind of diagram of what we're going for, but long and short of it is when we're making the improvements on 11 Mile, we're adding on-street parking, and we're also adding a 10-foot wide multi-use path on the north side of 11 Mile. In order to get the path, as well as the on-street parking, you have to close approaches that are on 11 Mile into those businesses. When you do that, there are instances where you are impacting the circulation of the private parking lot. So in the case of this 241 East 11 Mile, you have an existing parking lot with a private property owner, and it, that approach on 11 Mile is intended to be a one-way. So with a one-way, you only, you need a very narrow, you don't need a very large drive aisle, but when you close that 11 Mile approach, you change the circulation of the parking lot. So what this does, this, this agreement, what it effectively does is we're closing the approach, we're putting the 11, the on-street parking on as, as planned, but this encroachment agreement allows the property owner to encroach five and a half feet onto public right-of-way in order to get, effectively scooch those parking spaces down, and it allows a 20-foot wide drive aisle, which is a two-way drive aisle. Without this encroachment agreement, I would be effectively eliminating over half of their private parking. So this arrangement allows us both to have a 10-foot wide parking, or multi-use path, or on-street parking, and it doesn't impact our private property owner. So this, this encroachment agreement is kind of a, a way of us accommodating our private business owners, making sure that they have the, the parking that they need, and solving that problem. So I hope that answers the question. Basically, there, right now, there is no buffer between the parking lot and the sidewalk. So you can park in a parking space, and the nose of the vehicle will go into the sidewalk and block it. What this will do is it will allow us to encroach on, them to encroach on right-of-way, but they'll still be around, it thins out, kind of like a pizza slice, but it's around two and a half feet. So you're going from no buffer to a thin buffer, but it's better than what it is before. So we're improving pedestrian conditions with this proposal.
Thank you. Is this building currently occupied?
Yes, it is. So, well, actually, the business that's there now is closing, but they've, it's been, it's in the process of being purchased by a vet clinic. Most recently, they got ZBA approval. However, that, that sale hasn't finalized yet, but there is a proposed new business owner coming into this location.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments, discussion?
Your Honor?
Yes.
Could you detail why they needed the additional parking and couldn't just roll without it?
So it's not additional parking, so are you referring to the private parking lot?
Yes.
Yeah, so it's not additional parking. So what happens when you close the 11 Mile approach is the current drive aisle, the existing conditions are less than 20 feet. So you're taking a one-way drive aisle, and you're blocking it, and you're, in order to service all the parking spaces on the south end of the property, you, you don't have a wide enough drive aisle to service those parking spaces. So with the closure of the 11 Mile approach, without making another accommodation, you're making it impossible for them to get their existing parking spaces.
Any other...
Yeah, Your Honor, I have a question. There's like four or five on-street parking spots, are those, are those probably gonna, I mean, I know anybody could use them, but I mean primarily, what business would be primarily using those?
Those are open to the public.
Right.
So anyone could use them, as you said. It's likely that parking spaces that are close to a private business would be used for that purpose, but also across the street on, you know, for example, if people were going to the Methodist church, they could walk across the street, or another parking, or another lot, or another business down the road, they could use it as well.
What are your thoughts about, I'm just asking, what are your thoughts here about a, is it feasible to make a, have like a small, I mean, a thin retaining wall there that's only maybe like three feet tall?
I would have to defer to our city engineers about that. The, when they first did their construction plans for this, they didn't account for this situation, so we became aware of this becoming a problem, maybe, like maybe two or three months ago. So there wasn't enough time for us to incorporate a foot wall, for example, within our approved 11 Mile Streetscape Project. So it's not in the plans that, or construction plans that were already approved. Further, I would, I would defer to Brad and Norok and Fraus, because the, the right-of-way when you do this, it's not a clear three-foot or two-foot strip, it's a strip that thins out across the right-of-way. So I don't know if it's enough space in order to get a knee wall in. But what I will say is that this condition is improved, because now there is no barrier at all. We're at least getting some grass or some landscaping in there that will help buffer it a little bit. But not a permit, not like a knee wall. Maybe, we'd probably do bushes or some sort of thing, that barrier that would do that.
I think that would be just fine if we had bushes or something that would make kind of like a, you know, like a divider, you know?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I think council needs to understand that this agreement was negotiated with the property owners, so they had their input, because what we're doing is closing out access to their, their parking lot, and they'll have, they do have an approach on the, I think it was on Dalton, I'm not looking at it, is it Dalton?
Yes, well, it's Townley, but yes.
Townley, rather. And so we're taking away part of their parking lot. So this is what they're agreeing to in order to allow us to go forward with the, with the project. So any, any thing that we propose, assuming that the engineers were, were good with it, we have to go back to the property owner about it.
I understand.
Just to confirm, so the property owners are fine with this?
Yes.
They're fine with this, yes.
Everyone's fine with this, we just need to, it's our approval on this. Any other questions, comments? All right, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who can't say no, motion carries, zero. And then finally, from CED Director, the 515 East 11 Mile Dalton Approach, the easement agreement.
This approach easement between the City of Madison Heights and the property owner of 515 East 11 Mile has been proposed to help mitigate the impact on private property owners' parking spaces and circulation created by the 11 Mile Streetscape Project. It allows the private property owner access to their parking lot through the city alleyway as opposed, as opposed to the newly created approach on Dalton that would eliminate two parking places. Staff recommends that City Council approve the approach easement agreement with 515 East 11 Mile and authorize the City Manager and City Clerk to sign on behalf of the city pending final legal approval.
All right, thank you. Can I please get a motion from council to approve?
Your Honor.
Yes.
I move that council approves the agreement with the owner of 515 East 11 Mile for the easement agreement pending final legal approval, and authorize the City Manager and City Clerk to sign.
All right, thank you. Can I get support, please?
Your Honor, support.
Thank you. A motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All right, seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who can't say no, motion carries. And then next up, we have 6.5 that was added. This is the table policy.
Yes, so currently, we have an administrative table policy that went into place for the Festival of 2010. It was sent to council after the Festival of 2009, and it currently only allows political incumbents to have a table at the parks during the festival. So you have to be on council already, you can't just be a candidate, or you have to already be in state office, you can't just be a candidate. So there was a lot of discussion around that, and we have drafted two other versions for council's consideration. So you actually have three options before you, you can either leave it the way that it is, you can go to draft one, which in short, I will just kind of highlight it, and then I can read the details, but version one allows political candidates, both incumbents and those who have already filed petitions. So it wouldn't be people that are just thinking about filing petitions, or that are there to get signatures, they would have to have already filed the petition or be an incumbent to have a table. And the second version prohibits all political candidates at the park, so we would just have nonprofits and festival sponsors. So I can read those exact languages to you. So in version one, table spaces would be available and designated for eligible individuals and groups, but not to be assigned until you actually arrive. You'll be given a choice of the spaces that are still available. Eligible individuals and groups would be defined as politicians who are incumbents of an office representing Madison Heights at any government level, individuals who have submitted petitions to campaign for political office representing Madison Heights at any governmental level, nonprofit community organizations and/or Madison Heights City Boards and Commissions, and festival sponsors. That would be version one. And version two, similar language at the top, but eligible individuals and groups would be defined as nonprofit community organizations and/or Madison Heights Boards and Commissions, festival sponsors who are not political officials, either incumbents or campaigning, and city departments. So under version two, there wouldn't be a political table. So I guess if there's any questions or conversation or anything?
Your Honor, I have a question.
Okay, well, should we get a motion to, let's get a motion so that we can discuss? All right, can I get a motion to approve, and then we can start discussion?
Your, Your Honor, I'll make a motion that we approve draft version number two for the Madison Heights Department of Public Services Festival Table Policy, as amended today.
Okay, thank you. Can I get support? No support? No discussion? Then the motion is going to fail because there's no support. So there will be no discussion?
Right.
Because there is no support.
Well, I'd like to, okay, can I introduce, okay, can I make an amendment to this version two then?
Do you want to make a different motion?
Yeah, I'll make another motion, okay. So version two will stay the same, except when it says festival sponsors who are not political officials, either incumbents or campaigning. We, we can make that to where it reads that current sitting incumbents can have tables, but not, not having any political, using the table for any political purposes. That way that the city...
That's the current policy, so, like, you could have a table there, but you couldn't have a vote for Sean Fleming table there, but you could have stuff for the Crime Commission, or you could hand out pens, you know, with your name on it, but it couldn't be like, vote for me, I'm running for office. And, I mean, it's, people, political people can still come to the festival and walk around. They can walk around and get their signature, whatever. This is just specifically for a table that city staff puts up, so. But the proposal's what we already do.
Yes.
I would move that we adopt version one.
Hold on, hold on, is that basically what?
No, that's, well, I...
That's what you've said, is version one?
No, version, so version one, so what currently is in place is only incumbents, and they can't do politicking there. They can do like, tell on what they're doing on the boards, or what's happening in the city, or just greet people. They can't have up a big vote for me sign. Version one of this would allow people who are campaigning, who are not already incumbents as well as incumbents, to have a table. And then version two, which was Sean's original motion, would have, no political officials would have a table, either incumbent or campaigning, it would just be city boards and commissions, city departments, and festival sponsors.
Okay, so version two was not supported. Okay, Mr. Bliss, hold on, because you made a motion.
Yeah, I made a, okay, I made a motion.
So let's finish this motion.
Sure. So I was gonna, since it's just like you, you said version, the current version that we usually, we have in place now, it's just like that.
So you could make that motion, because council didn't formally adopt that, that was just an administrative policy, so you can adopt it and make it a formal council policy if you want to adopt the original, what we currently have in place.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Yeah, it's just an administrative policy now.
All right, so I'll adopt version, I mean, the current version to be our new, our new, our new adopted, or...
Council policy.
Council policy.
Which is, which is not version one.
Not any of these.
No, it, so it allows incumbents only to have a table.
Oh, it does?
And no campaigning, yeah.
Right.
So anybody on council could have a table, but people who have applied to run for council or turned in their petitions could not have a table.
I have the original one right here. Is it the current?
Yeah.
Okay, so...
But I'm, I'm open to hear, you know, I think that this is a discussion.
So why don't you withdraw your motion? Why don't you withdraw your motion?
I'm gonna withdraw my motion.
Okay, and then, Mr. Bliss, you had a motion you were gonna make.
Your Honor, why not? I move that we adopt draft version one.
Draft version one, okay. Is there support?
Support, Your Honor.
All right, motion has been made and seconded to adopt draft version one. Is there discussion?
Your Honor?
Yes.
So I wasn't prepared to talk about this tonight, I know it wasn't on the agenda and it was added, but I support version one for two reasons. Number one, historically, that was the original policy, prior to it being changed. I wasn't aware that it had been changed, it had been changed in kind of this gap timeline, and then it never affected me because I was an incumbent. But I think if you're, you know, for anybody who's opposed to, like, the redistricting efforts in Texas, I think this is very similar in that it's incumbent protectionism, where somebody running as a challenger who has filed their petitions and is challenging that incumbent does not have the same rights and abilities to campaign directly at the table next to that same incumbent. And for decades prior to, that wasn't the case. I worked a table for my dad when he was a challenger for mayor against Ed Swanson in his very first term back in the day. I worked my own table as a challenger for city council. And so I think this is the most clean, because it's a policy that existed for multiple decades prior to it being changed with a staff policy, which, whether it was intended or not intended, has the direct effect of protecting incumbents at the expense of new voices in the community. Now, future councils can do whatever they want, if this gets adopted, a future council can change it, but my conscience wasn't gonna let me just let this go.
All right, thank you. Is there any other discussion? All right, thank you. Is there any other discussion?
Yes, your honor.
Yes.
I, I really, so, all, all of us up here, except for, I don't know, but most of us up here, I guess Mark had the privilege of, of having a table when he was a candidate. The rest of, and I don't know if Dave did, but the rest of us have, have had this policy as part of our experience as running for office, that, you know, we couldn't go and have a table. And, you know, a little, it feels a little disappointing when you're a candidate, and you're trying to get out there and get into as many people's presence as possible when you're campaigning. And I can understand that, certainly. I also, the part about this policy change, the way it's written, is particularly concerning to me, is not just because, you know, we're, we're conveniently changing it when you're no longer gonna be a candidate, or an incumbent, but it's also that we're opening up having tables and tabling for any candidate running for any office at any level, county, state, local, federal, that represents Madison Heights in some way. So we potentially could have presidential candidates having tables at the, I mean, don't imagine we're going to have that. But, you know, we could, this opens us up to having candidates from every, every, every level, and changing the character of our, like, of some of our community festivals into one that's more directly political, rather than a community gathering to be together as community. I want new names and new faces to participate in our, in our local civic life so much. I want, I, I encourage people to run for office all the time. I'm always being like, somebody says something smart at a meeting, I'm like, you should run for office. Let's, let's figure out how to do this. And so I, I, you know, certainly want people to have opportunity to do that. But what I, what concerns me is, is creating an overtly political experience at one of our capstone events, like Festival in the Park. Whereas, when we have incumbents, we're not there campaigning, correct? We are, we are there connecting with our current constituents, and an opportunity for them to come, similar to how they do with, with open to the public meetings, come and talk to us. Maybe they have never made it to a meeting, or maybe they've never put a face to a name for somebody who represents them, and they want a chance to do that. And I think that having, you know, council people at those events, or, you know, I don't think, I don't know if we've had other incumbents from other offices have a table in recent years. I'm sure they've done it in years past, but in recent years, I don't remember that they have. But I can bet your bottom dollar that if we open it up to any candidate who is, has filed for office at any level, we will have a number of candidates from all over the place, from state, federal, county, and so on, that are coming to these, coming to these events, creating a specifically campaigning political atmosphere. And I think it's not, it's not right for our community. It's not something that we want to invite in as, as part of our group. Secondly, I don't know if it's secondly, or additionally, reading the policy as draft version one, individuals who have submitted petitions to campaign for political office representing Madison Heights at any government level, the submitted petitions language there is, is specific Madison Heights council and mayor, I believe, county, some county offices, and federal offices. But I do not believe our state representatives have to get any petitions filed. I believe state representative and senate file by, by filing fee. And there's a number of offices that can do that. So the language here is vague enough that it would, it could cause confusion. So, you know, if this policy is adopted by the majority of council, then I would suggest that we make sure that that language is cleaned up before it is finalized. But I do not think that we should take on this new policy. I think it would create a, an unduly political environment, rather than a community gathering. And so I will not be supporting this motion. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Any other comments?
Yes, your honor.
Yes.
A lot of the same points that Councilor Roback, Roback, Roback said, I'd agree with. I don't see anything wrong with the current policy. It's not, the Festival in the Park is a community gathering to celebrate the, the birth of this nation, and it's not necessarily needs to be turned into a campaign front. You know, if, and I, and I agree that if, if an elected official wants to come and use as an opportunity to meet with some of, you know, the people that they're representing, then great. It shouldn't turn into a campaign fight. So I, I, I will not support it either.
Thank you.
Your honor.
Yes.
I, I just wanted to add, I find this a little bit troubling, because it feels more like rules for thee and not for me. And from the perspective of, this is specifically about campaigning. But as someone who's had a table at Festival in the Park, since I've been on council, it was always about interacting with the public. And yes, did I get attention while I was there? Yes, but that's just a part of being in public office. It's like one of our biggest opportunities to actually connect with our residents. When we have office hours, the attendance isn't as high as we would always like it to be. When we schedule some events, everyone doesn't show up. As representatives of this community, if this gives us an opportunity to engage as elected officials, we shouldn't shy away from it, because we are or might run for an office at a later time. It just, it seems like we're looking at it from the wrong lens. We're not looking at it from engaging with constituents, constituents. We're looking at it from who's gonna win and who's gonna lose. And that's not the right lens in which I think we need to be looking at this policy. It needs, needs to be, how do we best engage our residents to give them what they need, not for who's running for office and when they're running. So I'm voting no, and I don't, I don't, I think that I'm super alarmed, because next year is a presidential election, for which I don't know how controversial it's gonna be, but if anyone has followed politics lately, it hasn't been the most politest thing to do lately. So I would be deeply concerned that this will cause more problems than solutions. So I think that we need to really just think this one through, and just vote no on it.
Here, anyone else have anything else under comments?
Your honor.
Yes.
I just want to point out, I think a lot of the comments so far, while incredibly well-meaning, and I understand where you're coming from about not turning it into political, ignores the history of the policy. Because we used to have three summer festivals, all with the same policy. And the reason why, and I talked to a couple of officials who were on council at the time when that was the rule, they would have, because it's a public park, anybody can politic anywhere in the public park, the reason that they set up the table policy was so that they could segregate all of the political candidates into one area, instead of disrupting, like, the band playing, or some of the vendors or experiences and that, as they had. There were specific examples that they cited to me, where there were political candidates and officeholders that were running against each other, politicking in the pavilion with the residents that were inside of the pavilion, trying to enjoy the festival. So I understand, and I totally agree. I don't want it to become political, but if any political people are there, it has the chance of it happening anyway. And I, I do really feel like, if we don't do this policy, then we should do a single table for all of city council leadership, where everybody can sit together if the goal is just meeting the residents where they are. Because otherwise, it, it definitely comes off in a way that I don't think anybody up here would want to, or intend to come across as far as protecting their seat versus new ideas. And I will say that, as far as the making rules for, for me, not for thee, kind of thing, I didn't know that this was the policy, because I had a table as a candidate, and I've had a table as an officeholder. I was completely unaware that this had changed until residents brought it to my behalf. And it was brought to me prior to this year's festival, which was prior to me even making a decision as to whether or not to run for this term. And as I understand it, four members of council encouraged city staff to make that change. Out of respect, we didn't change it for this festival, but it doesn't mean we shouldn't be having this discussion right now.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Your honor, in, in response to Mayor Pro Temp Bliss's comment, that part of the policy currently is that walking around handing out literature is discouraged, that, you know, you can't leave unattended stacks of campaign material out. Like, these, the things that he is concerned about for the history of the policy are actually addressed within the policy outside of the, the table issue in particular. So, like, you know, I don't necessarily, I mean, you can have a table that's all, like, all city council members can come and sit at this table, whatever, that's fine, I guess. But like, the, it's, you know, when I have gone and had a table, I haven't always done it. I didn't do it this year, because I was out of town. And, but, it's very often, it's the people who want to engage and to, are, are able to be there that day, and to engage with constituents who have the table that take the time to do that. You know, I don't understand the, the difficulty in understanding, because I, Mark, Mr. Bliss, I have, you know, I've been out there with you, with, with the bubbles and the, you know, it's, it's fun to do it, to be out there and to be like, hey, I'm here, I'm your city councilperson, we've never met before, let's engage, right? And I don't want to discourage the, the joy of the constituent engagement that you can have when you are, when you are there, by being like, well, you can come, but you have to sit together at this table. Feels, it feels arbitrary to me, as far as, you know, if people want, any one of the members of council, current or future, who are currently elected, can have their table and can connect with their constituents. I don't think we are ignoring history. And, you know, I know, I had, when I was running for office, we had a conversation at one point, and I said, oh, I'd love to be at, you know, at the Festival of the Park, but I can't, because I'm not an elected official. Which is fine. But again, I would, I would say that perhaps it ignores the history of what was happening at that time. But I've worked with a lot of politicians and people who are running for office at various levels. And, you know, the, the way it's done these days is that, that most of the time, they're not gonna show up unless they have a designated spot. If they're allowed to be there as a candidate, then they will come and participate as a candidate. Otherwise, you know, they might come and enjoy the festival, but they're not gonna come and campaign. So, that's all.
Anything else? Other comments?
We're, I just want to make sure, we're still on the motion from-
Version one.
Version one.
Version one with some kind of a modification, because Councilor Roback noted that not all levels need to submit petitions. There are some where you can apply to run with a filing fee. So we would need to make that change. Well, if we were to go ahead with this-
Just to the submitted petition language.
Yeah. So, version one, anyone else? Any?
Well, okay, my, my big problem with, with, you know, is that, that we, we can't give a table, as a, as a city, I don't think that we can give a table to any candidate for free. Meaning that it would be against the election, you know, campaign election rules, that they're receiving some, I can't, well, candidates that are currently holding office, right, or can, other candidates that are running, you cannot receive any, anything from the city to further your campaign. That's a campaign finance rule.
Your honor.
That, that's how I believe it reads.
Okay.
Your honor, I would disagree with the, the reading of that, Mr. Fleming, because every level of government will, you know, they have a, a county festival, and it's, you know, put on by County Executive Dave Coulter, you know, and, and he can be there and have a Dave Coulter table. You know, the, the county treasurer can have a county treasurer table. Those kinds of things, that's not giving a gift to, it's not, it's not a, like, a material value. Mr. Sherman, would you like to?
The intent of the policy that we have in place now was to make this as apolitical as possible. Now, I know that's probably mission impossible in terms of people, whether political humans or political animals, and, and not to police things. So we understand that people running for the state senate and the state house, and people running for congress, they've come to these festivals, and they talk to people, which is fine. The intent was, is here are your elected officials, we're gonna make them comfortable, have a, give them a table, let them sit down, and if any of the constituents want to come up to talk about some pending issue, they can. And my concern, of course, is that we're, you're, you're turning it into something that is political. And we want to, we do want to avoid, I'd have to take a look at the, the state finance laws, but I, just giving someone a table to sit at, I would say is not giving them something of value. But having said that, I still think the, the intent was to make it as apolitical as possible. And I think that's, that intent is, is a good one.
Any other?
Your honor, I had a question along that lines as well. So if everyone is given a table, can that be considered an endorsement for those candidates?
Well, under a current policy, you can't, you're not supposed to politic at that, which I guess is an example of you had a table this year, but you also got a phone call from me saying you can't be campaigning from the table. You have to be there as a councilperson, talking to the residents.
Whoa.
So that's the instruction that's given. By that same token, I know we are approached by people from the state. And I know in 2017 or 18, there was a state candidate who was not an incumbent. They were not allowed to have a table, but they attended the festival anyway with their flyers and handed them out, which produced litter. But, you know, they weren't there then to campaign, and they, you know, they weren't allowed to have a table.
But my question is, what about the candidate that's not an incumbent? I mean, is that, could that be considered an endorsement, the city giving them a table? Or is there a concern about that? Like, along the lines of, you know?
I mean, only if we picked and chose who we gave tables to, but under this policy, we would give tables to anybody who had filed a petition. So if the candidate didn't ask, then they wouldn't be getting a table.
And is the point of this, the point of the existing policy is to stay apolitical?
Yes.
Okay, and this is doing the complete opposite?
Exactly.
That's my concern. We're doing the complete opposite of the policy, and that's defeating the purpose. It's not making it fair. It's turning it into something else.
So, I'm just gonna chime in, just because I usually speak last, but there's some really long discussions, so I-
One more thing, count, so you could amend the version, you don't have to take the three versions. You could amend the version and make it only for Madison Heights people, candidates, whatever, and remove any government level. I mean, that's just a suggestion.
Your honor. Hold on. I want to say what I was gonna say, just so that I, because before, before I was on council, while I was on council, it never occurred to me to how this all worked, until this came out about a month or two ago, when it was brought to my attention. And like anything else, when someone brings a different view, you start looking at things differently. Oh, I hadn't thought about it, like that. And I remember being at the festival, and incumbent council members who were collecting signatures. And I didn't think of it at the time, and I, I never really thought about it until this came up in the last month. That, to me, is completely inappropriate, because they would have been campaigning. They sat out there, I'm councilperson, so-and-so, signed my petition. So to me, that should not be allowed. I really like the idea of having a council table, because we all are supposed to work together. And I know some of us have tried to bring us together and to do things together. And so when this came up a couple of months ago, that, that was something that had come up. And I said, I like the idea of us all sitting at a table. And granted, there's seven of us, so we probably need two tables. But the idea being, this is your council. This is all of us. So having, you know, seven different tables for seven different councils- So, having, you know, seven different tables for seven different councilmembers, to me, it doesn't show any kind of collaboration or cohesiveness. So, I like what Pro Tem Bliss had said about doing one council table. I'm also, I'm understanding the presidential election, as I see it, is three years away. Next year is governor, and having, having it so that it's just city people might help with the concerns that there are presidential or governor or whoever other people who are coming. So, those are kind of my thoughts there. But I really think this, I, I really like the idea of it being a council table because we should be doing this, and if we are going to allow candidates, then they need to have done, they need to have done either their petitions or their filing fee or whatever it is, and actually be on record. Just when Mark Bliss ran as a write-in, there were certain forums that said to him, until you, you can say you're a write-in, it doesn't mean anything, until you fill out this paperwork, it doesn't mean anything, and he had to fill out the paperwork to do it, and then he was considered a regular candidate. So, if we're going to do this, where we allow candidates, then we need to, they need to have done whatever that level is. What were you going to say? Or did he said it? Oh, okay.
Your honor.
What were you going to say?
I'd like to make a motion to table this motion, because if we are going to make a change, there are several changes that have been brought up and banded around, I think it would make a, make, it would be hasty to adopt something that have so many different kind of changes that are floating out here. We table it, send it back to staff to review with input from council, and, you know, if, if there is a, you know, a motion of second from the, from council to put it back on the agenda at a future date, then we do it then. I made that motion just now.
I'd support that.
Okay, so there is a motion to table.
You can take that motion first, the amended motion.
Yes, is there any discussion on tabling this?
Your honor, is it, is it tabled indefinitely, or do we have a specific date, sir?
I am motion to table indefinitely until we can figure out the appropriate language for the policy.
Support agrees to indefinite?
Yes.
Okay, so the motion is now to table this indefinitely. Is there any discussion on the motion to table? All right, I'm going to make one more statement then, and that is that I really think that we need a policy that is inclusive, and not just be like, well, if you're not part of the system, too bad. And that's how I see this. This really does act as a barrier, and Councilor Rorbach said this, you know, that she, when she was running, wanted a table, and she didn't get one. So, all in favor of tabling this indefinitely signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against say no.
No.
No. Okay. You know what, I think, I think it was the same as it was before.
A member in the audience said.
We can take a roll.
Okay, sir, sir, if you are going to continue to disrupt the proceedings, I'm going to have to ask you to leave. Your choice, your choice, not during the council meetings, you had your opportunity to speak. Okay, so I have tabling, I have Councilor Rorbach, Councilman Fleming, Councilor Wright.
Oh, no, no, I would, no, I was.
Sorry, not Councilman Fleming, Councilman Muir, and then I have myself, Councilman Fleming, Pro Tem Bliss, and Councilman Soltes to not table it indefinitely. Is that correct? Okay, so that motion fails three-four.
Your honor, I'd like to make a motion to table it until September, first September meeting to give us time to properly review it, and then that way it's time definite and not just indefinite.
Your honor, I'll support.
So, we can't vote on the table, the second table?
Well, we have, we have a vote, it would, if he wants to have a new.
We need to go through the first one, okay.
A new motion that would amend what we've already voted on, then, then he could.
Your honor?
Yes?
Happy to also simplify things, I would amend my original motion if the second would agree to simply table this to the next meeting, which would be the first meeting of August the 11th. Happy to do the second meeting of August, too, if staff needs a little bit more time to solicit feedback from council members, but the first council meeting of September is my birthday, it's my 40th, I will not be here.
I mean, as long as council knows they need to give feedback to administration before that meeting.
We, I don't know if we've count, your honor, I don't know if we've counted the votes on the motion to table indefinitely.
We did, it was, it was three-four.
All right, so.
It failed, it failed, so now we have Pro Tem Bliss's version one.
Okay, it failed, I realized that it failed.
The original, yes. So, we have the original, which he's amending now.
I'm offering to amend my original motion to simply table it to whichever of those two dates that the rest of council would prefer.
Okay, why don't, I'm just checking my calendar here, let's do, let's do the second one, the second meeting. Okay. Or, or the 11th, I don't know, what is, what does council want to do?
Your honor.
We have, which date do we want to do, the September, first meeting in September, Pro Tem Bliss won't be here.
I'm just going to note the 25th, we have the master planning session immediately prior to the council meeting, so if it's a long discussion again, it will just make our thing really long.
Okay, I don't know how much time staff needs to work on this, I don't want to do this indefinitely.
I think it's a relatively quick process if I get feedback from the city council. The policy is already fairly written, we just need to modify it. So, I can take comments here, if people are more in line with having it for city, if we just change all government offices to city offices only, if that's better.
Your honor.
At this point, I'm kind of not sure what I'm changing.
I think that's the point, that we don't, it's not, it's unclear at this point, direction, directionally, what the policy changes should or could be, and I would suggest the 11th.
Then let's, okay, so, Mr. Bliss, how do you feel about amending this to be tabled until August 11th?
I'm, I'm happy to amend my motion to that, and credit to Councilor Wright for the initial suggestion, I just moved it up because I won't be here.
All right, Councilman Soltes? All right, so, the motion is now that we table this discussion and vote until August 11th. Is there any discussion on that?
Your honor, the only thing that I would add is just for staff's, I guess, the feedback to staff, a version where there is a city leadership table.
Yes.
As noted in this discussion, but I would also advise, based on the conversation, that in, in draft version one, we continue that no, no politicking is allowed, so a challenger is there to just meet residents in the same way that we would be there to meet residents, and still, you know, effectively eliminate, you can't get your petition signed, you can't have political signs, you can't have the political literature, but it would allow for challengers, and, under those same rules.
City-only challengers?
Yes.
Okay.
Just so we have options going into the next one.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, and my comment is going to be that I want to make sure that this is inclusive, and so that there aren't barriers, because I know that that's something that's extremely important to this council. So, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against say no, motion carries. And next up, we have number seven from the Director of Public Services, the scheduled replacement of fire truck, or fire department utility truck.
The approved fiscal year 2026 budget includes funding for the scheduled replacement of a utility truck for Fire Station Two. The vehicle being replaced is a 2016 Ford Interceptor Utility formerly used by the Fire Marshal, with 125,000 miles, it has a condition analysis score of 30, which is poor warranting priority replacement. Staff recommends that council approve the purchase of a 2026 Dodge Ram 1500, as quoted by LaFontaine Chrysler Dodge Jeep Ram of Lansing through the MyDill Cooperative Vehicle Purchasing Program in a total of $41,000, including delivery mileage.
All right, thank you. Can I get a motion from council to approve, please?
Your honor?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that council approve the purchase of one 2026 Ram 1500, as quoted from LaFontaine Chrysler Dodge Jeep Ram of Lansing through the MyDill Cooperative Vehicle Purchasing Program in the total amount of $41,000.
All right, thank you, is there support? Your honor, I'm support. The motion has been made and seconded, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against say no, motion carries, and then we also have from DPS, the purchase of two police patrol cars.
The approved 2026 budget includes funding for the scheduled replacement of two police patrol vehicles from the general fund. Motorpool has been working with the police department to determine the best options for replacement. While the department is in the process of transitioning to Chevy Tahos as a frontline patrol vehicle, the consensus is to take advantage of the availability of two Durango Pursuit vehicles. Staff recommends that council approve the purchase of two 2026 Durango Pursuit all-wheel-drive patrol vehicles, as quoted by LaFontaine Chrysler Dodge Jeep Ram of Lansing through the MyDill Cooperative Vehicle Purchasing Program in a total amount of $93,000.
All right, thank you, can I please get a motion to approve?
Your honor?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the purchase of two 2026 Durango Pursuit all-wheel-drive patrol vehicles, as quoted from LaFontaine of Lansing through the MyDill Cooperative Vehicle Purchasing Program in the total amount of $93,000.
All right, thank you, is there support?
Your honor?
No support. Thank you, motion has been made and seconded, is there any discussion?
Your honor, I would just like to thank staff for providing that level of details because, you know, that was kind of one of the questions that we had talked about, the Tahoe Pursuit vehicles, but thanks for explaining why we're going back to the Durangos for these, this purchase specifically.
Thank you, any other, all right, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against say no, motion carries. And next up, we have ordinances, first one is 2203, it's the Amendment to Parks and Recreation Advisory Board Membership, this is the second reading.
Councilman Fleming, with support of Mayor Grafstein, has asked staff to revise the appointment process for boards and commissions whose members are appointed by the mayor with the consent of council, and amend them to have membership appointed by council as a whole. The first reading of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board Ordinance was held on July the 14th at the city council meeting. Should council concur, the appropriate motion would be to adopt number 2203 Amendment to the Parks and Recreation Board Membership on second reading.
All right, thank you, can I get a motion from council to approve, please?
Your honor?
Yes.
I move we adopt ordinance 2203 on second and final reading.
All right, thank you, is there support?
Your honor? I will support.
The motion has been made and seconded, is there any discussion? All right, seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against say no.
No.
All right, so motion carries five-two, and then the last one, ordinance 2204, the Amendment to Compensation Commission Appointment and Confirmation of Members, this is also the second reading.
The first reading of the Compensation Commission Ordinance Amendment was held at the July 14th city council meeting. As requested, staff made the change to the Compensation Commission Proposed Ordinance Amendment to include a staff recommendation for the membership appointment. Should council concur, the appropriate motion would be to adopt ordinance number 2204 Amendment to Compensation Commission Appointments and Confirmation of Members on the second reading.
All right, thank you, can I please get a motion to approve?
Your honor?
Yes.
I move we adopt ordinance 2204 on the second and final reading.
All right, thank you, is there support?
Your honor? I will support.
The motion has been made and seconded, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against say no.
No.
All right, and it is approved, five-two, and with that, I invite closing comments from Councilman Muir.
I got that from your honor.
Mr. Bliss?
Yes, your honor, a couple things. First, August going into September is a pretty jam-packed time for events in the city. We've got two more of our concerts in the park that are happening on August 13th and August 27th. Both are incredible bands, August 13th is weekend comeback, they're a pop-rock, like, top-40 band, and then on August 27th, it's Dr. Smith, which is a very locally renowned oldies and classic rock band with a lot of great tracks from the 60s and 70s. So, highly recommend you get out to those, and then Trail Tunes is coming up really fast on September 6th. We've got some incredible new musicians this year that have agreed to join us along the trails, so please come out, if you've been here before, you'll see some faces you've seen before that are playing, and then you'll see some brand-new faces, really talented local bands, that'll be playing on, like, the basketball court and in the pavilions. It's a really cool kind of festival experience, if you've never been, definitely check it out. And I don't want to give too much away, since I'm sure it'll be mentioned, but the following week after, Trail Tunes is also Revenon in the Heights, so we've got a full slate from August all the way through September of really great community events that everyone can and should come out to, especially since if you support it, it'll keep happening. If you don't show up, it won't keep happening. Volunteers put on a lot of this stuff, so, you know, you need to show them that you appreciate their efforts in bringing that type of live music and community activity into the city. So, please, please do that. The only final thing, and really because I've gotten a lot of messages about it, just because I, I am not running in November does not mean I'm gone, I'm, I'm still here, other members are still here, we're serving all the way through November when the term ends, so not going anywhere. But, you know, just to clarify, also, there's no hidden conspiracy theory or anything at foot, I was saying before the meeting to Councilor Wright, my son, so my, my youngest child, my son, has never lived in a world where I wasn't doing this multiple nights a week, and so this is going to be a great opportunity just for me personally to be able to spend more time at home with my family, and give that a try before, you know, this is a four-year term, so he'd be in high school when this term ends. And, yeah, this is a nice opportunity for me to do what George Washington said in his farewell address, is enjoy his own vine and fig tree in the nation that he helped to build. I really look forward to attending these events with my family as a volunteer and as a member of the community, as opposed to having to sit up here on council. So, I appreciate all of the kind words and support that residents have shown me, and no, I will not be running a write-in campaign, but I encourage anybody who's interested in running to reach out to me, I'm happy to mentor and advise and, and help you, it's not an easy thing, but please consider it if you're interested about moving the city forward. That's it, your honor.
Thank you, Mr. Wright?
One last time, right? Thank you, your honor. I first wanted to start off by saying I'm proud to announce that Revenon in the Heights is September 13th, and we have our presenting sponsor for this year, Priority Waste will be our presenting sponsor for Revenon in the Heights. I think they're going to bring out some cars as well, so that should be pretty exciting. And we talked about inclusion today, so we're going to have a city council award, as well as the mayor's choice, fire chief's choice, police chief's choice, and human relations are going to pick the car, so it's going to be a good event. Registration will be open at the end of the week, we got that figured out, so you can pay the day of either via cash or credit card, but registration is going to be open, so tell your folks who are car folks to come on out. I know there's a lot of folks in Madison Heights that are car folks that have said they want to come out, and I know there's a gentleman from Lanfair High School, as a matter of fact, who was down in Motorama, and I know he's going to come out. So, September 13th, come on out, 10 to 3, sign up for, car registration is going to start at the end of the week, so look forward to seeing you guys all there, there's going to be some good music, but no live music, but good music. I also wanted to acknowledge that July is ADA Pride Month, it's just time to celebrate the contributions, resiliency, and rights of people with disabilities. In that spirit, the HREC invites you to join us tomorrow for the Adult Adapt- In that spirit, the HREC invites you to join us tomorrow for the Adult Adaptive Game Night in the Breckenridge Room. So they're just, it's gonna be family games, but one of the cool things, Jessica, who's on our board, who does a lot of work in this area, showed us some of the games. It's like, they'll, they'll have Uno cards, but the Uno cards will have symbols on them, where you could, if you were, like, colorblind or you couldn't see it. And so it's gonna be a great atmosphere, a great event. I advise you guys to come check it out, be a part of it, and have a good time. That's all I got.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Sherman?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Mrs. Marsh? Nothing.
Anything from the council tonight?
Nothing, ma'am. Nothing from me tonight.
Yeah, I just want to remind, you know, talking about people with disabilities, this, this coming up month in August, on August the 7th, the planning for the recreation master plan is gonna be focused also on persons who are caregivers, taking care of persons with disabilities, and if you have a disability also, and you can get to the meeting and express your visions for how we can make Madison Heights more accessible to those with disabilities, including programming, you know, not just adults, we have children that are able to participate at programs at the library, and also throughout the recreation program. And I'm hoping that we can build on that and build some type of relationships with outside organizations and bring them in to our recreation department and make a lot of programs available in the future. That's kind of the goal there. That's it.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Soltis?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I don't have a whole lot to say. I do want to just address the, the people who were here earlier about the gas station on 12 Mile. When we approve or deny something, there's a lot of thought that goes into it. There's a lot of things that we look at. We also have certain rules that we need to follow. And so tonight, we were not in a position where any of us could say, I'd like to make a motion to deny that gas station, or I'd like to make a motion to approve that gas station. And this is what happened when they came before, and I let them know that. The August 19th meeting, there will be the opportunity for them to speak. Planning Commission will get all the information that, that they've provided. There will be additional. I expect the people who want to make this change to the gas station will be there as well. And then Planning Commission will look at a number of different things, and then will say, okay, we're making a motion to approve or not, or approve under these circumstances, or however it is. But there are certain rules that need to be followed with that. So coming here and speaking is, is fine. Everyone is allowed to come and speak, as long as you are respectful during your three minutes. I'm not gonna cut anybody off. But just want to let people know that when we make these decisions, there's a lot of things that go into it. And then, as we saw tonight, we had votes that were, a lot of them were unanimous. There was a five-two, there was a four-three, there was a three-four. So this is what happens, is we each have one vote. So I don't get extra votes, because I'm the mayor. Pro Tem Bliss doesn't get extra votes, because he's the pro tem. Mr. Muir doesn't get less votes, because he was the last one on council. We all get the same number of votes, which is one. And in order to do something, we need the majority of people to approve it. And with respect to the second readings that we had for the board appointments, just as a reminder, these came about because a few months ago, Councilman Fleming and I were talking about the Crime Commission. He is the representative, but as mayor, I was making the appointments, and we were just talking about how that didn't really make a whole lot of sense. And it just, you know, when you start talking, and we went off on a tangent, and it was, well, if I wanted to get rid of the Crime Commission, I could just not appoint anybody, you know, as a theoretical. And we started looking at all these, and that's why this came about, is because we want to make sure that one person, whether it's the mayor, the pro tem, or whomever, needs to be part of the majority, and not just the one thing that they want to do theoretically, stopping some kind of a board from happening. So do appreciate the conversation with respect to the table. Again, until it was brought to my attention, I hadn't really thought anything of it. And so now, we're all very aware, and hopefully, we're gonna come up with a good policy that is going to be fair and inclusive for everyone on council, as well as for our residents.